Brian Sullivan, or actually listed as G. Brian Sullivan, Chairman. And let's call a meeting to order. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board of Appeals on September 28th. Purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard's and the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio and video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board or attorney presenting a case to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed properly. I'd like to have all the Board members identify themselves.
David Nunley.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Brian Sullivan, Chair.
Chris Murphy.
Tim Bailey.
Okay, well, let's have a clerk call our first case.
Case number 2022-26. This is a continued case. 22 Ocean Ave LLC, being represented by Attorney William Crowell. Assesses map 6B parcel L10 in RH2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or in the alternative, a variance to demolition replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 325-52 and 54 and Massachusetts general law 48, section 6 and 10. And this is continued from July 27.
Now, Attorney Crowell has presented us with a request to continue. We might meet in for the record.
All right. Case number 2022-26. I, William D. Crowell, Esquire Attorney for the petitioner on the above matter, hereby agrees that the time for holding public hearing and rendering a decision in the above matter be extended up and through and including the date, which is 180 days after this date. Agreement is assented to by the Board and by all present hereby waive the time limits further provided. MGL chapter 48.
I will assume that reading's a motion.
I'll move that we continue this case to our first case on our next meeting, which I believe is October 26, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, full approval of the Board.
Thank you. We have, as I indicated to you, that we've worked out an agreement with the butler. So, we should be making a presentation next month.
Okay, if I could, I think it's appropriate for me to ask this question. There are two butlers that...
The one that had filed a written concern on behalf of, he's a trustee of Supplemental Needs Trust, that's the one.
That's the butler that you reached agreement with.
Right. We've come to an agreement, we're revising the plans accordingly, and we'll get those to you as soon as they're, as soon as we have them.
Attorney Crowell, I'm signing this, approval of the Board. And I'll have a copy, CP, and I'll tell you tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's fine.
All right. The next case...
Next case is case number 2022-27. Dale M. and Susan E. Shaw, through their attorney, William D. Crowell. Owners of the property located 45 Christopher Way, assesses map 108 parcel X32 in the RH2 zoning district. The applicant is seeking a special permit or in the alternative.
Thank you.
A variance to construct in addition retaining wall on the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws of 325-52 and 54, Massachusetts general laws, chapter 48, section 6 and 10.
Now, as we decided to hear this case at the last meeting, we had closed the open meeting. So, we had closed the open meeting before, so we need to reopen the public meeting again. So, if I could have a motion to reopen the public meeting on this case?
I'll still move.
A second.
I would vote.
Aye. You should designate who's going to vote.
Yeah, I'm going to do that as well. Just going to write the notes down here. So, as we assign on August 31st, voting on this case is Al Donahue, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Timothy Beale. And actually, I'd like to begin here by asking, now that the public meeting is reopened, I ask the applicant to, representative, Mr. Crowell, to introduce themselves and any people that are helping you present the application.
Thank you. Attorney William Crowell from Howard's, representing the petitioners this evening. We were here on August 31, and so this is a continuation of that case, so that we could supply additional information to the Board. I made a presentation regarding the addition, meeting the requirements of the Gale case. I don't think there was too much concern about that. There was more concern about the retaining wall. And so, the discussion was whether we meet the requirements of the bylaw 325-17F2, F as in Fred, 2, for a, as to whether the retaining wall is a structure similar to an open terrace step, stoop, and the like. And if it's under four feet in height, it would cut the setback in half, from 20 feet to 10 feet. So, at 15 feet, we would meet that requirement for the retaining wall. And as Mr. Ryer pointed out last time, and that was my, the main thrust of my argument, was we would not need a variance if we meet that requirement. Then the concern of Mr. Shaw was as to whether he could meet the four-foot height requirement. So, Mr. Shaw has handed out to you a statement that he wanted you folks to read regarding his opinion as far as the hardship is concerned that's involved. And I know Mr. Ryer and the Board asked for plans. You know the environment right now as far as getting a surveyor and engineer to do anything, and they're all five months out. So, the best we could think of was to give you a good picture of the retaining wall, of what the existing retaining wall looks like and what the new retaining wall would look like.
Well, can I just interject? Mr. Ryer had also expressed concerns about the height of the retaining wall. And because I hadn't really contracted with anyone to build the wall, I had no real concrete evidence of how high it was going to be. So, I luckily was able to get two of the landscape contractors to come out and actually draw up what they needed to replace and move the retaining wall to, you know, within the pushing foot, which is the request of the property line. And so, both of them indicated that it was probably the maximum height of the retaining wall was going to be about five and a half feet. So, just to cover that, I had the surveyor redraw the plans and with heights on the plans, and also with a note on there that indicate that the maximum height of the retaining wall was going to be five feet 11 inches or less. So, I'm hoping that that satisfies, you know, the requirement, because you had indicated that you couldn't stamp something, you know, that was ambiguous. So, this, I think, defines exactly what the retaining wall is going to entail. So, in terms of the hardship aspect of it, I have a boat, a small boat, and the thing is, just because of the geometry of the property, it's a narrow opening for the existing driveway. And I'm a novice with boating, so I can't back the trailer into the driveway. Luckily, I have great neighbors. So, my neighbor across the street works for Allen Harbor, and he moves boats around all the time. So, if I have to bring the trailer home, I call him and he'll do it. Or my next-door neighbor, John, is a CDL truck driver, so he can back up anything. So, without a modification of the opening of the driveway, making it wider, there's no way I would ever be able to back the boat trailer up into it. And then there again, the other aspect of the hardship part is the fact, is the special permit. If that is approved in terms of granting the addition, there's no way that a car is going to make it into the driveway, into the garage underneath the addition, without moving that retaining wall back as well. So, those are the two aspects that I'm hoping will justify, you know, approval of the variance.
If I may add to that. My client's main concern was, is the height of the wall closest to the garage. It's not for the entire length of the wall, you can see from the picture. It doesn't need to be that high. But his concern was that the excavator couldn't guarantee, nor can Mr. Shaw, that it would not be more than four feet in height as required by the bylaw. So, it's not for a very long distance, but it's a topographical feature because of the mound there, that it has to be high enough to hold back the soil when the, if the driveway is widened. So, the way I'm looking at the case is that if you accept that 325-17F, or 325-18F, my fault, would allow a four-foot retaining wall in this location, 15 feet from the lot line, without a variance, we're not really asking for a variance for that, the entire length of the wall, or for the, we're not asking for a variance for the setback. We're asking for a variance essentially for the height of the wall. On the assumption you could have a wall in that location at four feet in height, we're asking for a variance of that four-foot height requirement, is the way I look at it, to five foot 11 inches or less, where required by the topography of the wall and its location shown on the plan.
I'm not, sorry if I, I'm not sure I totally agree with that assessment. I think that, I mean, that makes it very specific. And then you would have to define when it transitions from the, you know, the five feet six inches to less than four feet. And neither, I couldn't get the, neither of the contractors to say, okay, until they get the equipment in there and, you know, move the dirt away, I couldn't get a drawing that would say exactly where that was going to occur. So, that's why I went for the plan where is, it would, you know, just, it would not be above the five feet 11 inches. But, you know, obviously near towards the end of the driveway, it wouldn't be any close to that dimension. But, you know, the questionable area, which is, you know, close to where, you know, that you have to make the turn into the garage, it would, you know, I couldn't, neither of the contractors could define exactly where that place was going to occur. But if it's approved to be 15 feet from the property line, then there's no issue. I mean, then they can build it the way they have to build it to be, you know, adequate to hold back the soil.
I think we're basically saying the same thing.
Okay.
That it's dictated by the topography of the soil, of that mound. That would dictate when it has to be above four feet in height.
Yeah, and see where you're coming from, and looking at the wall, and looking at the topography, which is well above it, a few feet in, if I understand that. Any further at the moment?
No.
All right, the Chairman, I'd like to ask the members of the Board for their comments and questions. David?
I have no questions.
Yeah, I think we can clearly grant a special permit for the addition. And I think we can grant the variance for the wall. I think we do need to put a condition that it's not going to exceed five foot 11 inches, and then the contractor can determine where it's going above. I mean, that's the best we're going to do, but I think that's, that's fine. Because just aesthetically, I don't think he's going to want to run the whole thing at five foot. It's going to look pretty doggone ugly, so I don't think aesthetically they're going to stage it. I'm comfortable with that.
Ugly years behind the holder.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we also ought to put a condition on that all the construction vehicles park on-site. They've got plenty of room here between the, on the old driveway there to park the vehicles, because it is a little tight in there. So, yeah, I'm okay with the variance and with the special permit. I think that special permit meets the requirements of the bylaw and both the Gale and Deidrich cases are just intensifying a pre-existing nonconformity. And I think the topography of the land over on whatever side it is, the, I guess it's the west side of the property.
West side.
Yeah, west side would support the grant of a variance. And it's only, if you look at it the way Attorney Crowell is looking at it, and I happen to agree, it's only a minor dimensional variance. It's under two foot dimension in this type case being the height. And the courts give the Boards a lot more discretion on minor dimensional variances than on other kinds of variances. So, I think it's supported. That's all I have.
I'm in full support of it.
Yeah, I am as well. I just wanted to, we have no idea the timeframe at this point. And I don't believe we need to do a seasonal...
Not if they park the vehicles on the site, yeah.
But are you...
Oh, no, my driveway, yeah. There should be no problem, there's enough space.
Are you concerned at all regarding construction vehicles being required to be parked on-site?
That's what I was just verifying. No, no, not a problem.
Because, I mean, I'm going to be taking the boat out of the water, and that's going to be stored at the marina, you know, for the winter. So, that's going to open that area, so they can easily put multiple cars there.
If one of them has a trailer, they're going to ask Mr. Shaw to back it up into the driveway.
If they don't mind it getting stored.
Particularly initially, when you're tearing the wall down and so forth, I wasn't quite sure in certain moments of this construction that you're going to be able to keep everything on-site, that's all. You just don't, on a consistent basis, we don't want, we want the vehicles on-site.
Right, so, I mean, that's the other advantage of the neighborhood I live in. I can get any of my neighbors to allow me to park my cars or construction vehicles on their land. It's just a great neighborhood.
All right, I have no further questions. Chris?
Dave summarized it perfectly. I have no other questions.
I have no questions.
No questions. Okay. Anybody else, anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this application? All right, well, no one else in the public that wants to speak to it? Any final comments at all from the Board? And I'd like to entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Still move?
Still move. Case number 2022-26, excuse me, 22-27. Dale M. and Susan E. Shaw, through their attorney, William Crowell. Owners of the property at 45 Christopher Way. And the Board hereby grants a variance.
I'm going to go for a special permit.
Special permit initially, and to be included with a variance. Dale M.'s root number, the property is located at 45 Christopher Way, assesses map 108 parcel X3-20 in RH2 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit to construct the addition and pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 325-52 and 54 and MGL chapter 48, section 6 and 10. In addition, the Board remove, to grant a variance in this case for the removal of the existing retaining wall and the construction of a new wall in accordance with the plans submitted with this application, having found that it is not to be greater than five feet 11 inches in height. The applicant meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, of the bylaw, MGL chapter, section, excuse me, section 10, chapter 48, as the shape and topography of the land justify the variance in the failure of the Board to make this grant will result in substantial hardship to the applicant. The Board further finds that this condition is specifically to this property and does not generally affect the entire district, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public by the granting of this variance, and that its granting will not nullify or substantially degrade from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans. Let's see.
You might want to mention that on the special permit, it meets the Deidrich and Dale cases too.
All right, with regard to the special permit, it is, the bylaw covers Dale and Deidrich cases, meaning that the property does not in any way impact the neighboring properties in that neighborhood. For the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on a public street or road. The violation of these terms and conditions in a special permit and variance may be enforced as a violation of Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to general law 48, section 7, the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
I'll second that motion.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping the Board will approve both issues?
It's been, it's one issue, just in two paragraphs.
Right, so, may I suggest the Board take two votes, because the standards are different for a special permit versus a variance?
That's a reasonable request.
Thanks.
So, we'll treat it as two motions then?
I think that makes sense, yes.
Okay, so, let's have, first on the first motion regarding the special permit. How do we, I'd like to hear a call, a conference vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's all in favor? Motion carries. And on the second motion, regarding the variance, I'd like to have a vote for the Board.
Aye.
And that carries as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I'm going to note that the not to exceed five foot 11 inches in height's a condition.
That was in the, that was in the reading.
Right, but that is a condition.
Okay, that was in the reading.
We'll make sure it's not six feet, Mr. Ryer. We go one inch over. I know you'll be out there.
You can come back with new plans.
Both contractors indicated be five feet six or less, so...
The building commissioner might be out there looking at it.
Right. Thank you very much for all your time and patience on this, and over two hearings, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the bigger plans, appreciate it.
Good luck on the project.
Yes.
I just have to find contractors to do this building, because the landscaping contractors, I got quite a few people who are interested in that, but I have yet to get any kind of response from, for the major builders in the town who are highly recommended. So, I'm just hoping I could find someone to do the construction.
Yeah, I'm having trouble getting sewer contractors to give me a proposal.
He must be calling the wrong numbers.
Oh.
Sure they would get back. I'll help, yes. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right, case number 2022-28. Brian A. Toronto and Michelle Toronto, through their attorney, James, excuse, through James Haggerty, Reef Builders, P.O. Box 186 West Denitz. They have this property over located at 24 Green Needle Lane, assesses map parcel, map four parcel, T2-13 in RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to demolish and replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 325-54, Massachusetts general law, chapter 48, section 6 and 10.
Good evening. Name's Jim Haggerty from Reef Builders.
One whole second, please.
All right.
Thank you. Assigning a voting, Chairman, assigning voting in this case would be Al Donahue, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Joe Beasley.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin, I did receive the butler's notice, and as you mentioned, in not voting in this case, nor, I think, it would cloud my judgment of potential question or any of this.
So, you know, Tim was still going to remain on the, on the Board, on the panel, and would be asking questions.
Okay.
Okay, so, now...
All right, here we go. Now I'm Jim Haggerty.
Now I ask the representative to identify themselves, anyone who's going to be helping you.
All right, Jim Haggerty, I'm representing Brian and Michelle Toronto. We are, let me just go through all this. They bought the house about a year ago, and it is nonconforming in a couple of different ways, but the overall project here is, we're going to take down the roof structure and all the exterior walls and interior walls, so that all that's left is the foundation and the first floor framing. We're going to do an addition in the rear right corner and an addition in the front left corner of the house. So, in terms of its setbacks and so forth and nonconformities, start with the lawn itself. It's an undersized lawn, it's only 10,670 square feet, only has 105 feet of frontage where a 150 is required. The home itself was built in 1969, and the setbacks, when it was built, an existing house, the, well, the coverage itself, I'll start there, coverage it was, is at 15.2%. The, that's building coverage, site coverage is at 28.6. The front yard setback's at 26, which conforms, the right side setback's at 20.7, which conforms, the left side is at 15.3 feet, which is nonconforming, and the rear setback is at 38.6 feet. Building height is, it's a simple ranch, it's about 18.3 feet high currently. So, what we're proposing is to add that those two additions I spoke of, the one, the building coverage will be increased to 21.1, the site coverage to 32.9, the rear setback, the front setback will stay the same, the rear setback will be at 20, rear setback will be at 33.5 now, left side setback is going to remain at 15.3. The left side is the area that is nonconforming. We're proposing to pull the garage forward. We are going to not be increasing that nonconformity, but we will be adding that space in some room above. This is going to... This is, I'll just go through my list here. So, single-family dwellings make up the neighborhood, although this is a little larger. It is, we feel the structure is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. It will not increase any nuisances, hazards, congestion, et cetera. We will not be increasing any of the existing nonconformities, and we'll be using the existing foundation, so we won't be encroaching any further towards the... existing foundation, so, um, we won't be encroaching any further towards those setbacks. And we are adding additional habitable, you know, square feet with the second floor and such, but we do feel it's, um, in keeping with the neighborhood and not substantially more detrimental in our belief. With that, I'll be able to, uh, hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Okay, no, thank you. All right, so, chairman, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to ask the members of board for their comments and questions, starting Dave.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I think this application meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale and Dietrich cases, they're simply, um, increasing the existing non-conformity, navelly adding habitable space within the setback. I don't think it's gonna have any substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I do think we need the construction time condition as well as our general condition, and you are aware you're gonna have to redo the septic, right? You've got the board of health letter.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have.
I have a question, where is the septic actually located on that property?
It's going on the back, uh, right corner.
Back right corner, where is it currently?
Um, it's in the center of the backyard.
It is, okay, okay. Thank you. Is that, uh, one of the, that bulkhead and the outdoor shower?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't, I forgot to mention the bulkhead, so it's in the back of the house now, we're removing that, we're gonna put it on the left, the right side of the house, um, it is less than four feet high, and it's gonna be thirteen point, I mean, it's about thirteen point three feet. What are my notes here? Thirteen point five feet.
All right.
Will be to the bulkhead, so it's less than half the setback, thank you.
All settled?
Yep.
No further questions?
Okay, um, no questions, okay. Tim?
No, no questions?
No questions.
Just wanted, just to your, your comment regarding being able to maintain all your equipment and, you know, on, on the property during construction.
Subcontractor vehicles and such?
Yes.
Yes, that would be normal, there might be some up to, green needles loop, which is helpful, but there might be some times where there's a cement truck or two, uh, waiting to come in and maybe a pump truck, so there might be, I don't know, a half a day maybe of some interruption, but it won't stop anybody from getting to their homes because it's a loop.
And what's your anticipated timeframe?
About ten months.
Starting, actually, two months from now, wherever you would.
It's about right, yeah. Yep, soon as we can, we're ready to go.
Yeah, and, uh, it was mentioned that the board of health is re- is requiring you to be complying in your septic system.
Yep.
I also wanna note, let you know that, obviously, the planning board didn't express an opinion yet because they did not have a meeting prior to this meeting tonight.
Okay.
So, the planning board may have some comments which we haven't seen yet.
Okay.
Just to let you know that, you know, I doubt that things are gonna happen, but, but be aware of the fact that everybody else has signed off on it, uh, except, uh, the board and the board of health, okay? Uh, any additional comments or anybody else? Uh, if that being the case, uh, anybody in the public that wants to speak to this application?
Good evening, everybody, my name is.
I want you to take me.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Vincent Costello, I'm in, I am a neighbor of Brian and Michelle Toronto, and I'm in favor of exactly what they wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for hearing. Is there anyone else? And not to hear anyone else that wants to speak to it, I, uh, I have a motion to, uh, close the, uh, public hearing.
Some move.
Some move, okay, Chris, and who's second?
Second.
Okay, Al, okay.
All right, case number, excuse me, case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, Brian A. Toronto and Michelle Toronto, through James Hagerty Reef Builders, P.O. Box one forty-six, West Dennis, they are the owners of twenty-four Green Needle, the board hereby grants a special permit, um, for the property at map four parcel, T two dash thirteen, in the R H zoning district, the applicant seeks a spec- uh, moving on to another one. All right, the, um, we have now moved on regarding that, it meets the Gale and Dietrich cases, um, the following conditions, uh, will be subject to this permit. Let's see, there shall be no demolition, uh, exterior construction or new landscaping during the period of June thirtieth to Labor Day in any year. This condition, or the condition of this approval, that is a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit, may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter forty-eight, section seven, and Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
Second, I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, just wanted to, just discuss, you know, just wanna just real quickly here, if, um, I realize that where this is located is, is near, you know, beach section, correct?
It is.
It is, it is. And, um, just wanna just general discussion, if, if the contractor can maintain everything on the property, does that impact the timeframe that we're, you know, we have a seasonal situation here of June thirtieth to Labor Day? I mean, if he can maintain all vehicles on the property, does that impact our decision on making, um, the project required to be shut down between June thirtieth and Labor Day?
I'm, not in my opinion, because it's a pretty close neighborhood, that's when people are here, wanna be outside, they're not gonna want all construction activity going on, hammering.
General discussion of this.
Music, whatever's going on with the contractors.
I understand you plan on doing this within the next ten months.
That's right, and we can start in a couple of months, but, um, it would be all interior work at that point anyway, it'd just be painting and such.
Okay, so.
When it came down to the summertime, there's no exterior work, yeah, we'd have the landscaping done before then, so.
All right, so, by, by doing this, this, this life of the project, does that imply that we're not allowing him to do interior work?
No, it doesn't, it only covers exterior work.
Okay, just make sure, I have it down, not even mentioning ex- did you mention exterior? I didn't hear that.
Demol- no demolition, no exterior construction or new landscaping.
Or exterior construction, okay, just wanna make sure here.
Right.
All right.
And the new landscaping is the idea, you know, you don't want major trucks and equipment.
I didn't hear you say exterior, and I maybe.
I think I did.
Okay, and I missed it, I apologize.
Yeah.
All right. Well, enough with the chairman. All right, so the motions are made, uh, do I, you have a second by, by Dave?
Aye.
Fully approved?
Thank you.
Your approval.
Good luck with your project.
Yeah, good luck.
I'm just gonna ask for a momentary recess, I need to go to the men's room.
Sure.
Is it intervention here?
Would you have any luck getting, I got another date? Did you pull in another date?
So what you said is Monday, Tuesday, is it all good?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, that's a big building, it's like, uh. Still have time for it.
For all of us, it's a huge building.
Most people love on Cape Town, we do get a couple of employees that live on the other side of the bridge, but they already have, like, um, something like closer to us. Monday, might be best to put it in, Tuesday. Monday might be when the rent is, got it, Sunday and Monday.
Wouldn't damage my game.
Then on Tuesday. Yeah, I mean, the building's open six. She wanna, go in twenty thirty, not on, uh, Monday, Friday, so, you know, our CEO.
I would prefer not to.
She's our, so she was the.
Why are we doing both? Just to, just to see, on Monday and Tuesday, that way there, if one doesn't make, we just.
You get points.
Even if we cancel? All right. All right, well, we don't want that to happen.
I mean, this time of the year is getting to where, uh.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of the people I was out there with today are getting ready to leave in two hundred years.
That's assuming they can find someplace to go.
So one guy was, uh, one guy was getting text messages and the pictures from his homeowners association, the lobby was underwater, using napkins, lobby was underwater.
The name, yeah.
Another one, yeah. We're on the force so far.
Yeah.
Let's, um, kick things off with, uh, review of the minutes from the August meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
And, um, I'll find my copy here someplace, but, but does anyone have any, any corrections that need to be made?
I'll move that the minutes be approved as submitted.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Nice job.
Yeah, um, well, the, the problem is shorthanded, I've been writing the minutes, and then, but it was, so I just want you to know that Alicia is still viewing the film and checking my minutes that I write, so she is going over the, and she's, and she did make, you know, a couple of corrections and so forth, one night up, so it's, um, checking. Okay, um, excuse me, sir, I know you're here tonight, uh, and, you know, I assume there are portions of this meeting that you wanna make.
Yeah, I wanted to listen to the House of Housing.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and your name, sir?
Peter Gory.
Okay, Mr. Gory, okay, all right, so, whole business here, uh, last week we brought up the Cape Cod Commission, the Dirtworks Ninety update, okay? I did speak to Cape Cod Commission, basically, there's nothing that's gonna be happening on that thing until some point in October, it is before them, uh, and they were not, um, sure as to what, um, requirements are gonna be from our town at the moment, you know, as far as to hear any case and so forth, all right? Now, obviously, we, you know, get the, in the new business, but we have a new building commissioner that's starting, maybe starting next week, and I'll get into that into, into new business, but, when he arrives in, you know, on the scene, I'll make sure he's aware of this thing so he can personally take his time to check out the Cape Cod Commission and, and talk to whomever over in Dennis as well, okay? I visited the site, and clearly the work that's being done, from what I can tell, uh, is, um, on the, on the Dennis portion. What I'm, not, what I don't know, and maybe someone here does, is that if it's under one lot, one continuous lot, not in separate lots, and part of it, the, the one lot is area is in Harwich, which it is, and the other section's in Dennis, what, if it had to do with any kind of zoning issues, situation, what, what control would, or area that this board would have to be involved with?
From whatever you gave us last time, and I don't have it here in my file at the moment, but it looked like maybe it was just the parking lot that was in Harwich, where they'd have ingress and egress and actual.
The buildings in Harwich as well.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the buildings in Harwich.
Okay, but I mean, where they're doing the, whatever, the mining or whatever, that was back in Dennis, so.
It's all, it's all in Dennis.
We would have no jurisdiction there.
Okay.
It would just be if they wanted to do something, you know, in, where the, um, ingress, ingress and egress is in the building.
Right, if the egress is coming through Harwich.
It's right way up.
Right, I think we'd have to have the building commissioner go out there and see what's going on.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, I just wanna get some of my notes out here for my next one. All right, so Mass Housing Partnership, um, generally you know the fact that, um, I had a discussion with them in twenty-six, uh, the conference call was strictly regarding understanding the process of a forty B application, and particularly regarding that for an application for the talent to make to get technical assistance, and regarding, um, should we ever have a, uh, comprehensive permit application filed in a forty B, um, case coming for the board. Uh, there was no discussion regarding any particular case during the discussion, it was just learning what the process is, and they did send me an application, uh, which when we do have at some point a certified, I mean, a comprehensive permit application that we file, it was only really a fifteen minute, maybe, uh, phone calls, I had some questions regarding, you know, the process and so forth, and, and discussion of how you, you know, uh, select and get a consultant appointed. So basically, uh, if we do ever have a CPA presented to us, the, um, next step would be to, uh, file for the grant, the fact that the talent hasn't used a technical assistance and had a grant since two thousand and four, two thousand and five, was the last time the talent used a, um, a consultant on a technical review for Mass Housing, then they felt the fact that, that they were probably approving, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, or the full amount for the grant. The, uh, at that stage, the person who's ever, and again, uh, if we do ever have a CPA, then when I do the application, that's when I go in front of our attorney first before it gets sent in, just to them review it, it's something that'll be signed by myself, uh, after review of this board, and the, um, chairman of the selection, and it's sent in. And quite frankly, they're just looking for, um, that's all it involves, it's a fairly fairly short application, um, and, uh, then the bills get resent in after a meeting with the consultant, they would indicate what other resources that we would need, of course, that's in view of meeting with the consultant and with our attorney, what other resources, technical assistance, experts, et cetera, that they think may be needed to review whatever project it might be on a, on a CPA. At that point, uh, they get identified. At that point, they get identified, hired. And the, all the bills, that fifteen thousand dollar grant, that gets submitted basically on a monthly basis or pre-arch basis by the consultant to Mass Housing. If they feel any time that is, we're, we're really banging the budget, they may bring an issue to our attention and say that these additional things may be a cost to the town. But in their experience, the fifteen thousand dollars has typically maintained, they've been enough to pay for, you know, most of the assistance that's needed from the project consultants.
They provide a list of consultants?
Yeah, they gave me a list of four to six. I kept what was on there. And, and since if we ever do have a C P A, our, our attorney, in talking to her, she has experience with, with a number of them and she would probably base upon their availability.
Right.
She would first list out, I refer this guy, this guy, this guy, in a, in any particular order. That would get presented to Mass Housing and then they would, based upon our preferences and based upon the availability of those, of those consultants, they make the assignment. We don't.
Okay.
Okay, they make the assignment. Okay, so that is, that is the process. Something else I had. You know, make sure I have a note, I apologize, but I don't think it's coming across as being the zoning list. Okay. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, okay. And, Mr. Gorey, you wanted to?
Sure, thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm just actually going to say hello and thank you. I, I know your job's going to be really tough. Should the application for the comprehensive permit come before you? I've been a commercial real estate broker and consultant for nearly twenty years and I would just let you know that I think that fifteen thousand dollars is going to be woefully inadequate for this site, given the wastewater, water, traffic, and then the analysis of the financials for the town. So that's just a personal and professional comment. I was, obviously have interest. I am in a butter, so.
If I could comment on that, basically, a lot of these professionals that get hired, they will be, they will be responsibility of the developer, the applicant to be paying for.
Right, but then there's a peer review, right? I mean, a traffic study done by a developer who wants to do traffic counts in the winter, which I've already said, when we know, most of us who live there know that the traffic counts have to be conducted in the summer to give an adequate read.
Yeah.
You'd be, you'd be analyzing their numbers.
And actually, if I may comment right now, I, we're not tonight discussing any particular case.
Just, just on, just on, okay, so just purely if a C P A came before you.
Sure.
The analysis given by a consultant needs a peer review and that's what I do for a living. And it's, I just suggest that once you go through it fifteen thousand dollars for this project, if it would become before you, would be woefully inadequate. That's all I'm suggesting.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
And we'll have to take a question once the guys.
Yeah, I'm sure you have other professionals on the board that can help you. And I know it's going to be a long, we're going to get to know each other and I appreciate your time and indulgence. Thank you.
My pleasure, okay. Okay. Uh, any other comments on Mass Housing and that thing? All right, new business. So we have a new building commissioner. His name is John, and he goes by Jack, me, or May. And I believe he starts next week. He's not at the moment, but he's, in reading my, in reading the article in the paper, he indicated that he plans on moving to Harwich. And that Harwich was an area, a town that he wanted to move into in the first place when he retired. So we saw this opportunity come up and I believe the fact that he's going to be, so hopefully that means if we have a a new building commissioner who's a resident in the community, we may have one that stays on longer than three to six months.
Wouldn't that be lovely?
Which would be good. Okay. I have one comment for anybody else on that. Okay. One comment under new business. I'm having a moment, but does anybody have any new business that they want to? Okay, all right, so next month, and I believe prior to our next meeting, I'm going to be meeting with the Bo, Board of Selectmen regarding the annual review, which you've done several times. But at that review, I'm going to bring up to the selectmen a couple of things. One, that my understanding is that they've may be initiating a comprehensive review of our zoning regulations. I read that in the paper. I have not gotten any memos from them. I think in the past, and David and Al, who have more experience in the board, it appears the fact that when zoning regulations are done, done by the planning board and selectmen and so forth, we haven't necessarily been in that loop. And I'm going to meet with the selectmen. When I meet with them, I'm going to request the fact that we are in a loop. Because many of these zoning regulations, you know, if they're, if they're not clear, don't, don't help us render decisions without, you know, on a sound, you know, I think being absolutely clear that what it is. And I think one of the situations is with garages.
Well, there's a whole bunch of them as we know.
Right, so what I'm asked the board to do is to, maybe a couple of comments to me tonight. What, what zoning regulations you think are ones that, that are inadequate for our, our decisions. Just so I have a couple of things in, in mind, when I bring this up to the board, I want to be able to say to them, like, for instance, they may ask me the question. Well, give me an example of problems we've got. And I want to be able to, when I meet with them.
When's your meeting, Brian?
Huh?
What's your, what's the date of your meeting?
I think it's actually thirty-first. They actually made me after our next meeting, but.
October?
Yeah, it's in October.
Okay.
Towards the end of October. So, um, if any of you guys could send me an email, a note regarding zoning regulations you think that need to be, that are.
Yeah, according to the paper, they're not going to have the consultant review zoning. It's going to be the planning board. They took that out of the scope of the consultant the town's proposing to hire, according to the newspaper article.
I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
So I need to have the selectmen recommend to the planning board that they include us in the review.
That would be a pleasant change.
Okay. I mean, to me, one of the main things was, was the issues with nonconforming lots and, and, and detached garages.
Garages, bedrooms, I mean, just, I'll, I'll go through, because we've had the same things come up, as you know, over and over and over again.
Yeah, so if I could get your input, guys, and particularly Dave.
Accessory buildings, all of that stuff.
Yeah, because it's, and perhaps at the next meeting, if you, if we could put a list, if my meeting is, is after the selectmen, but I just want to get a few, just make sure I could walk in there and I have a few points to, to bring to their attention as an examples.
Okay.
And then we can certainly find the time, I think, to, I think we'll be, it even requires a next meeting, find out what the planning board is going to do and get a timeframe. So perhaps gradually, if it's, timeframe is going to be, they're not doing this till March, whatever, then maybe at each meeting we have in between, we can have a discussion and, and build our suggested cases as to how we want to see that, that zoning regulation amended so that it's clear. You know, agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, I think it kind of covers things. Any other new business? All right, without any other comments and so forth, I'd like to hear a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, we need a second?
Second. I need a second. Both.
Second from Dave.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, okay.
Yeah, I'll send you something on that, Brian.
All right, thank you. Meeting is closed.
And the reason it goes to the planning is because it's, in the town bylaw, I think, that the planning board has jurisdiction.